Just keep it blank.
Clerk of color vote.
Counselor Capone. Counselor Delasola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Mangan.
Absent.
Counselor Matuski.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Semenelli.
Here.
And President Hanlon.
Here. Just a quick announcement that Counselor Mangan is unable to attend to a prior planned commitment. Counselor Capone unable to attend, he's on vacation I believe, and Counselor McKennan unable to attend driving his daughter back to college.
And we have eight members present.
Eight members present, thank you, we have a quorum. Please stand and salute the flag, if you're audience please join us. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, perfect and just as far up. Please be seated. We only have one thing here, right?
Correct.
Clerk, will you read the agenda please?
Before we do that, I believe you should...
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, can we make a motion to accept Senator Canilio as our clerk for this evening?
Second motion made in second to accept Mr. Canilio as our clerk for this evening, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, you have elected Mr. Canilio.
Okay, the only item on the agenda is from the mayor's office, according to the provisions of the city charter section 3-5B, I hereby call a special meeting of the city council as follows, the confirmation of membership of the Kavarian School Building Committee.
Would you, if there's no objections, would you also read this to put it into the record?
Yes, I will, I have it.
As best you can, thank you.
Okay, this is a letter sent from the mayor's office to the MSBA. In accordance with 963 CMR 2.0, attached for your review and approval is the amended membership of the School Building Committee for the George Kavarian School located in the town of, city of Everett. The committee was formed in accordance with the provisions of all applicable statutes, local charters, bylaws, and agreements of the City Charter of Everett. Committee members include the following, would you like me to read each member, Mr. President?
Hmm.
Okay. SBC member who is MCPPO certified, which is Lara Weeby, the purchasing agent, local chief executive officer, Mayor Kalu Di Maria, we have a vacancy in the administrator, school member, school committee member Alan Pena Risi, superintendent of schools Frederick F. Forrestier, local official responsible for building maintenance, Lona DeFeo facilities maintenance, representative of office authorized by law to construct, Mayor Kalu Di Maria, school principal John Obremsky, member knowledgeable in educational mission and function of facility, Charles Obremsky Assistant Superintendent, local budget official or member of local finance committee, Eric Demme, CFO, chairperson, members of the community with architecture, engineering, and/or construction experience, Alfred Vigonzi Housing Specialist, and any others which are Mazie Galaska Deputy Director of Planning and Development, Kevin O'Donnell, JD Chief of Staff. Listed below is the past performance of the School Building Committee, the Building Committee temporary or permanent, or any other committee responsible for oversight, management, or administration of the construction of public buildings and its individual members. Not applicable as this is a new committee. After approval of this committee by the authority, the city will notify the authority in writing within 20 calendar days of any changes of the membership or the duties of said committee. Mayor Kalu Di Maria.
Thank you. Counselor McGlaughlin.
I'd like to invite up Dr. Stella from the school department and Chief of Staff O'Donnell via Mayor Di Maria.
Second?
Second, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, please. Would you gentlemen each, excuse me, each identify yourself.
Thomas Stella Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
Kevin O'Donnell Chief of Staff.
Counselor, no, I get Counselor, Counselor McGlaughlin.
I'm going to ask one quick question, which is, Dr. Stella, do you have a presentation this evening of some information that you would like to share with us beyond...
No, actually, the only thing I can share with you, the mayor and superintendent have put this committee together, and it's subject to changes as they may occur, as potentially could occur in any committee, but it requires the support of this body in order to move forward, to make sure that we're following the protocols of the City of Everett Charter, and also the protocols of the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Mr. President, I do have a couple of questions, I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues, and then you can come back to me.
Okay, okay, Counselor DeFlorio? Pardon? You're all set, okay, Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, to Mr. Stella, congratulations on your recent retirement, by the way.
Thank you. Notice I'm still here.
Well, the good have to stick around for a little longer, maybe longer than that.
And I will.
We appreciate that, because I know the hard work that you have done over the years, but I'm just curious, this school is what, 12 years old is it?
Approximately.
12, yeah, and is it, just so I understand, the population growth, it's not big enough, is that it?
It was originally constructed for 650 students, there are currently 934 there, and all of the other schools are at or above capacity.
Wow, I know it's a very nice school, very clean.
It's actually where the kids live.
Right, and that part of town, and there's no more sewage problem that was backing up years ago, I remember that debacle.
You are correct.
So it's almost a little over 300 above capacity?
Yes.
That's interesting, wow, in 12 years that all happened.
And it's continuing to happen, we started the school year with 7,208 kids, as of this morning, we were 7,301.
Wow, well, we do have a good school system, and I guess people want to live here for that reason, and the other question, are elementary schools overcrowded also?
The others, the, there are several others that are over their design capacity, and one that has just reached its capacity.
I see, well, thank you very much for being here, I understand the situation, thank you.
Counselor Delasola.
Good evening, I don't know what you could, information you can give us right now, and for the people at home listening, this committee is only for the Kavarian, correct?
That is correct.
Now, do we know what decision, like I just said, I don't know what you could tell us, are we, I hear all kinds of things going on, that's just how a small city like this is, are we talking about a committee to, how we could better the school, if it's adding on to it, or taking land, is that what the whole plan is here?
As of this moment, the Massachusetts School Building Authority has given us the okay to investigate building a new 950 student school.
So you have 950 plus the one that's there now?
Yes.
Now, we have to figure where it's going to go, and...
That has yet to be determined.
Okay, so this committee's going to get together and decide what's going to go on, and will be updated in the process?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Napolitano.
Thank you, now, the reason it's a committee for the George Kavarian School is using that as the basis for justification as an example of the increases to, for the 900 person school?
That's correct, any application to Massachusetts School Building Authority has to be to remedy a particular problem, the problem that we do have is excessive overcrowding at the Kavarian School, so that's why it's in that vein.
And so the plan is not to find a solution to the Kavarian, is to use this as a means to be able to build an additional school with a larger capacity, to basically take the overflow or the increase that the other schools are being burdened with as well?
That's correct, the School Building Authority has notified us that, because my original request was for an 850 student school, and they informed us according to their mathematical calculations and their projections, it wouldn't be enough, so they okayed a 950 student school, and then told us they'll see us in a few years.
Great, all right, thank you, I have no other questions.
Counselors, Rosa, did you want to ask now? Okay, Mr. McGlaughlin, Counselor McGlaughlin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have a couple of brief questions as I stated, one is in the past we've had school building commissions that have had members of the public served on them, individuals that we all know, God rest his soul, Mr. Ne, that I bring back memory to Rick Ne, who served on the School Building Commission, Lafayette School, and others, there is no members, general public members on this list, is there a reason why we didn't go out to get input from PTO parents, or anybody from the general public on this issue?
The designation, the designation that you see there was done by the Mass School Building Authority, the designation, the first column.
Okay, so we kind of had to fill in these blanks, so that's the reason why there's no members of the general public there, should we look at getting some input, we're going to have a lengthy discussion going forward about a new school in the city of Everett, should we not have input from some, either PTO parents, or some school advisory board commission members, somebody in the general public that can express the opinion of the parents of students in our school system?
If this council wanted to enact that, that would certainly be, certainly be okay.
Sure, and I completely understand.
Any changes that we make to this have to be sent to the Mass School Building Authority for their okay.
Sure, and do we need to make those recommendations tonight, Dr. Stella, or do we have time to...
No, you've got plenty of time, there's plenty of time.
Those decisions down the road, because another one of those types of questions I bring to my mind is, I see a member of the school committee, I see members of city hall, I see members of the school administration with Mr. Forrestier on this, we as a city council don't have any representation on this School Building Commission at all, whether it's a voted member or not a voted member, I sort of think that we should at least have somebody at the table that is expressing our opinion and our thoughts as a board, somebody that can come to the table, if I come to a School Building Commission meeting, I can't speak at it, it's not open to the general public.
They are absolutely open to the general public.
But not the speaking portion, you can attend it, but you can't speak at it.
I think that's up to the School Building Authority, to the School Building Commission, this board.
Sure, I just, I don't know how my colleagues feel on that, but I think it doesn't hurt having somebody at the table that, if a question comes up, we can get an answer from the School Building Commission on that matter, and I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Well, like I said, I don't think anything prevents this School Building Committee from silencing questions, I honestly don't think that would be a problem at all.
And what is the timeline that we look at to come up with a recommendation of some sort, because as you said, Dr. Stella, right, the school from the beginning of this year till now has increased X amount of students, every day it's increasing in our schools.
Correct, what we have done so far is, according to the guidelines submitted to MSBA, we have posted a request for services on the central register, proposals, about a dozen proposals have come in, they are now sitting in the purchasing agent's office waiting for a subcommittee of this board to be chosen, to review those proposals and make a recommendation. Once that happens, then they'll begin looking at the pricing, and hire an owner's project manager, who will then begin to move the project forward.
Okay, that's great, and I ask that question, because Ward 6 is bursting after scenes, as we all know, right, we have the Waters Ave development that is moving forward and opening up some other potential developments in Ward 6 that are going to bring additional students, the Kavarian school area is overpopulated, but Ward 6 is not very far behind it, and the Maddie English School, you're going to be putting kids on the roof pretty soon to teach at the Maddie English School, and I talk to the parents every day down there, so that's why I was just wondering when we're going to look at, this is a resolution for this area above other parts of the community, thank you, Dr. Stella, for your time tonight.
You're very welcome.
Counselor Napolitano.
I have no questions for, I guess, yeah, but I do have some comments regarding the, some statements we've just made.
Okay, just hold on.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Could I just ask one from the chair, it's just a matter of policy, I'm looking at the makeup of the group, and we have, the mayor is listed twice, and I don't really mind that, but the fact that says he's a voting member, and he has two votes, is that going to be what will happen, he'll have two votes?
For clarification, Mr. President?
Yeah, he's going to represent himself?
No.
Okay, evidently, I'm told that the second, the second position is going to be a representative of the mayor, although it doesn't, does say that, okay, so that's what it will be then.
And when that happens, we will submit that information to the Mass School Building Authority for their approval.
Okay, but then again, if there's a representative of the mayor, will the, if the mayor is there, will he be there representing the mayor?
I would expect so.
You know, it's just a question, so I don't know how to answer that, you know what I'm saying, if the mayor is in attendance, and he has a representative of him, is he in attendance also?
Mr. President, so on this, it does state specifically the local chief executive officer, so a CEO is the mayor or town manager, so I believe that what they mean by this, and I think they just stuck Mayor Di Maria's name in the bottom, is just because they haven't designated Catherine, or someone from the mayor's specific office, or someone in the building, to that position, they put his name there because he's the, you know, he's the mayor, but I believe that's what it is, they will add someone in there, and that will be his designee, he's always, he has to be there as the chief executive officer of the city, it states it in CMR 963 2.0, we looked at it a little while ago, so the representative will be someone that the mayor chooses and approved by this board and the School Building Authority, from how I read it in the...
So it will not be the mayor ever?
It will not, it should not be the mayor, is the way I read it, it should be a designee that he designates when he's ready, and it should be, it should come the same way these members did.
All right, Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, gentlemen, for appearing tonight, I just have one question, do the members of this committee, is it specified anywhere that they have to live in Everett?
They should.
Okay.
They should, a previous, a previous school board, a previous School Building Commission member did not, but I don't think there's anything that says that it's a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Burley, I think it's not.
Any further questions, Counselor Napolitano.
If we could excuse, I guess, customary thanks.
Okay, you gentlemen, excuse with customary thanks, but you might want to hang around just in case there were more questions.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, I, I mean, I understand, you know, my colleagues' concerns in Ward 6 about having the general public involved, but the list here is, you know, when we look at the designation which was set up by the state, we see that every person and name and title brings qualifications to the position, and not that I would want to block any of our residents from wanting to participate, they'll have that opportunity during public hearings, and through other aspects of this meeting, I think the, you know, we're not looking to add more designations by trying to bring a non-political person into this, and nor I think would it be best served for this committee to try to look through this and determine who should be removed to make room for somebody, so I mean, I share, I share, you know, Counselor Ward 6's concerns, but I think the listing is fine the way it is, because everyone here brings some expertise to this committee, and I think it's a very well-rounded list, I mean, I'd like to see us move on and move ahead, and even though we've got time, I think any delay is something that we may regret on the other end, as we're getting closer to try to finalize these things, so I mean, I would, I would think it would be fine the way it is, and in that, in that vein, I would motion that we confirm the membership of the, to approve this.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Again, I respectfully agree with Counselor Napolitano, my only thought is, Counselor, is that you look at a 12-member panel, seven of them don't reside in the city of Everett, seven of them don't know the makeup of the city of Everett, it kind of brings a little alarm into me that we have a majority of members of the School Building Commission don't reside in the city of Everett, don't know the true makeup of our city, the grounds of how our city comes together and forms a puzzle, and that's where I was going with the idea of trying to maybe get somebody that is boots on the ground, somebody that does know the city like we do, like parents do, and that's where I was going with that question, but thank you for your comments.
Counsel DePiero.
Thank you again, Mr. President, I just, Counselor McGlaughlin just shared my same sentiments, that I'm willing to approve this this evening, but I hope perhaps in the future that some consideration can go into maybe adding a few more citizens of Everett onto this, and perhaps swapping some people out, thank you.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yeah, and I most definitely share the same concerns about people who don't live in the city being involved here, but that doesn't preclude that they bring other expertise to the table, I mean, I agree, I agree, it should be Everett residents, but on the other hand, looking at some of the people on this list who are Everett residents, I think they more than offset what the, what not living in the city, you know, of the other members bring, they're, the expertise of the other members, you know, I'm looking at at least three of them right now who I know don't live in the city, but are very long, have a great deal of experience with grant writing, with other, other community projects, and I would actually say that in most cases, they're actually more qualified than the average Everett resident is, in certain areas that'll benefit this committee, but I, again, I share your concerns, and I, you know, in taking that into consideration, I definitely understand where the councilman's coming from, you know, I don't really want to see city hall addresses up here when we see address, I want to see their home addresses, I'd like to get a better idea of who actually lives here and doesn't live here, but again, I don't want to delay this, I really don't think it's strong enough to warrant going back and revisiting this, and getting their approval, coming back for us, for us to confirm that, but I definitely share the same concerns, and I do respect the fact that you brought those questions up, you know.
Counselor DeFlorio. How's that, Counselor Delasola.
Yeah, I hear the concerns of Counselor McGlaughlin, we could always add, here's the, this is what the state wants to do, I'm wondering down the road, we could have, like Dr. Stella said, we could have our own committee, watch them, we can't have our own committee?
On that point, yeah, in CMR, again, we're going just by the chapter of Massachusetts Regulations, that does not state that, it gives you criteria, gives you certain people, certain executives or whatever that have to be in there, it does not give, according to what I've read, it does not say anything about adding any residents from the city or municipality, you had to use at least one of these people, and that's the only thing that it states in CMR, unless there's something that I've missed, and we can always go over it after, I think they need this approval tonight, and we can go over it, and the clerk and I, and double check, but I believe I'm correct on that, and then if you can add them, we can always revisit it like Dr. Stella says, but they need this approved tonight, so the school committee can vote on it.
Well, I'm for this, I just think, I know we'll get the information as soon as they do, I mean, this is not going to be delayed, if they, they say, okay, we're going to put the Kavarian here, but out onto the back, I'm sure as soon as they know what's going to happen, we'll know at the same time, so I'm in favor for this, thank you.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
So again, Mr. Burley, our clerk committees and assistant city clerk just told us that we cannot add additional members or new members to this committee after tonight's meeting, so, brings me back to the point of looking at some of these positions, and again, some of these people are very dear friends, but members of the community with architecture, engineering, or construction experience, do we not look at that tonight and think about somebody that may live in the city of Everett that has that experience that we can put on there as an Everett resident, if we're not allowed to change out the positions going forward, should we not look at this a little bit more carefully tonight?
Yeah.
I understand the regulations are very specific, but it doesn't have to be the peoples.
Correct.
Any further questions? Counselor Matuski.
Thank you, President Hanlon, I am happy to, after finding out how short-changed we are in the elementary schools, while throughout the city, I'm happy to support this, and I'm glad that the city and the school department are moving forward, Everett is going to be changing in the next few years, and, you know, we have to, we talked about the high school being overcrowded, and it's very important that we stay ahead of the ballgame on this, and I hope that there is union work on this job, I know that we've had some issues with our other...
Council's getting a little off the question.
Well, it's to do with the building, and that's one of the, you know, down the road, I'd like to see a union representative put in here, a construction trade person, but that being said, I am in favor of this, Mr. President, I'm sorry, if I was going to ask a question, maybe I will ask Mr. Stella, if I could have him back.
Ask him to come back, motion made in second half, come back, all in favor? All opposed, Mr. Stella, Dr. Stella.
Thank you, Dr. Stella, this just slipped my mind, I know that in the past, when we built the high school, it was 90% to 10% ratio, I'm pretty sure that's what...
You mean in the reimbursement?
Yes.
Correct, somewhere around there.
Where does this stand if this application goes forward?
If my memory serves me correctly, it's at 78%.
78?
Yes.
Which isn't too bad, really.
Pretty good as far as I'm concerned.
Considering...
It's the best you can get in actuality, it's the highest reimbursement.
That's the highest, right.
That's the highest. I'd like to address Counselor McGlaughlin, if the mayor, this board, whomever, if they decide that someone, or someone that currently serves on this committee decides that they're no longer interested, there's really no problem, all we have to do is submit the name to MSBA for their approval, so changes can take place.
I'll yield the floor, it's okay.
Thank you, thank you, okay, just, I just don't want any debating going on in here, Counsel, if you want to speak to the board, go right ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank Dr. Stella for clarifying that, because that's what I thought originally, but then was told differently, so it can be changed down the road, Dr. Stella.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
That is what we said, we said tonight, they needed to approve it, with these specific members, and down the road, if the mayor wanted to change someone, that's...
Counselor Matuski.
Just to finish up, from my question, I also want to thank you for remaining in the chambers, I was just a little curious on that reimbursement schedule, and are we on, in plans for the high school now, too?
Two weeks ago today, I submitted a statement of interest for an addition to Everett High School.
So that'll be a different commission?
That's a different commission, correct.
Okay, and that's... Okay, and that's the same reimbursement level, too?
We'll know, well, that's the reimbursement level for this project.
I see.
If the reimbursement level changes in two years based on their formulaic calculations, that may be different.
So this school is the priority for this city at this point?
That is correct.
Okay. I want to thank you very much for clearing that up.
Any further questions of Dr. Stella? Any questions at all? Final comments on the motion? If there is, there is no motion. I missed it, okay.
And Counselors, before you vote, I recommend suspending Council Rule 20.
I make a motion to suspend Council Rule 20?
Hold on, which is what?
It's for the mayor role appointments. It's something I went over with the city clerk this morning, so.
Motion made in second to suspend Rule 20. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rule 20 has been suspended. Motion for favorable action. On the motion, all in favor signify, is that...
Roll call vote.
Order, please, answer the roll.
Counselor Delisola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Matuski.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Polatano?
Yes.
Counselor Semenelli? And President Hanlon?
Yes.
We have eight yays, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made in second to adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? All opposed? So move. We have adjourned.